The time is now 6:35. I call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
James Gallin.
Here.
Anthony Brown.
Present.
William Wiley. Margaret Shepherd. Stephen Hunt. John Gustafson. Evelyn Harris-Clark.
Present.
Moeti Nakumbay.
Present.
Rene Burgess.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Item three, acknowledgment of board member absence notification.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Gagnon, Acting Director of Development Services. I did hear from Mr. Gustafson tonight as well as Mr. Wiley. Mr. Gustafson will actually be absent. Mr. Wiley has another work event that he's going to try to make it to our meeting tonight as soon as possible. We also did hear from Ms. Shepherd, and she's been a bit under the weather, so she may not be here at tonight's meeting. Being that we have two permanent board members out, I would ask that both alternates receive voting rights for tonight's meeting.
So noted. Item four, additions and deletions to the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to discuss one addition to the agenda. Under separate cover memo, an add-on item for the plat associated with Newman Windows project was provided to the board. That should be provided in your hard copy backup information on the left-hand side. What this is, is the plat that will allow the legal configuration of the lots. This is coinciding with the site plan application. The reason for the late addition was that there was a few technical comments that their development team needed to respond to. Staff was happy that they were able to respond to those prior to tonight's meeting. Otherwise, we would've had to bring the plat back separately. So by adding the item on, we're able to review both items concurrently, which will allow for City Council to review the item sooner. So that's the additional item. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Are there any questions by the board? Okay, item five, disclosure by board members and adoption of the agenda. Are there any disclosures? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda?
Aye, so, motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
James Gallin.
Yes.
Anthony Brown.
Yes.
Stephen Hunt.
Yes.
Evelyn Harris-Clark.
Yes.
Moeti Nakumbay.
Yes.
Rene Burgess.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item six, approval of the minutes from August 29th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Roll call.
James Gallin.
Yes.
Anthony Brown.
Yes.
Stephen Hunt.
Yes.
Evelyn Harris-Clark.
Yes.
Moeti Nakumbay.
Yes.
Rene Burgess.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item seven, unfinished business. Seeing that there is none, on to item eight, new business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I also want to make note that the hard copy documentation provided to the board is also available in the back of the council chambers as well for public reference. Under new business, we have letters A, B, and then the add-on item C, which is the plat. Letter A is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, abandoning a portion of old East 13th Street, Blaggler Avenue per the plat, as shown on Riviera according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book two, pages 90 and 91 of the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida. Said portion lying between block two and block 14 of said plat, bounded on the east by the west right-of-way line of Avenue C and bounded on the west by the east right-of-way line of Broadway, US 1, State Road number five. It said lands lying and being in section 33, township 42, south, range 43, east, located within the city of Riviera Beach, Florida, containing 25,508 square feet, which is .5856 acre, more or less, providing conditions, providing for separability and conflicts, and providing for an effective date. At this point in time, I'd like to ask Ms. Harper, our principal planner, to provide the board and public with a presentation on this item. Ms. Harper?
Planning is up. Any board members?
Good evening.
Andrea Harper, principal planner, for the record. The applicant is the Riviera Beach redevelopment agent, CRA, known as the CRA. And the project name is abandonment of old East 13th Street. Hey, the request this evening is to abandon a portion of the old East 13th Street, which runs east and west from Avenue C to Broadway. Here's a location map. The property is located in the southeast corner of Broadway and 13th Street. Here's an aerial view. The property is, the underlying land use is downtown mixed-use, and the zoning district is downtown core. And the zoning district is consistent with the land use, and these are the surrounding areas. Everything's consistent here, the land use and the zoning district. Here's just a sketch in red. You'll see the proposed 60-foot right-of-way that's got to be abandoned, and this is the sketch in the survey that the applicant has provided to us. Just to give you a little background, back in 2000, February, back in February of 2013, the council approved the Marina District Master Plan. And second, the abandonment of this existing right-of-way is necessary to allow for the configuration of the Marina District uplands and to allow for a replat of the Marina District, including a relocation of road right-of-ways systems. Staff recommends that the planning and zoning board recommend approval to abandon the proposed abandonment to the City Council. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Hunt.
Are there any utility district assets that are included in the abandonment of this effort? I understand on the surface level, obviously, it's a great idea, but I just wanted to make sure I understood the implications for the utility district or any other utilities that are underneath the surface.
No, no, sir. And the utilities department reviewed it, our senior engineer, John Armstrong, and he had no objections at all.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I'm not too familiar.
Give me one second. I just want to make sure that we don't have any comment cards.
No comment cards.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Nakumbay.
Yes. I'm not familiar with what exactly abandonment means as far, was there something going on there currently? Because it just looks like a.
We're going to go back to the aerial. Right now, exist is a right-of-way that's no longer being used. It is old East 13th Street. So in order, we need this to abandon it, there, in the future, there's going to be a land swap between Viking and the CRA, okay? So right now, in this configuration, this area, we can't do anything, and then we can't comply with all the approvals as far as the master plan and the current development that's going to be going on with the Marina development, future, well, approved master plan.
If I can expand on that a little bit further, too. So abandonment applies only to right-of-way. So the box in red on the screen, it's not seen as real property. It's not seen as private property. It's seen as a public right-of-way. So the only way of removing that use from that area of land is to go through an abandonment process. And what happens is, from the center point of the right-of-way, it's divided and then provided as part of the other adjacent parcels. So if you could imagine a line going east and west through the center of that roadway, that would then be turned into real property and then allocated to the property to the north or to the south.
Madam Chair, I have several questions. And I understand that this has already been approved and presented to the City Council, and I believe you're asking us for a vote. So I just want to make sure that I understand the background details and some questions related. So my first question is, how long does the CRA expect the portion of East 13th Street to remain abandoned? You're abandoning the right-of-way with the potential of it being real land property for eventual use. What timeframe is placed upon that aspect of abandonment, which would probably lead me into further questions?
So the abandonment is a permanent process. So once the property is abandoned, it would no longer be considered public right-of-way and turned into real property. There is an agreement that's currently in place, and in order for that agreement is between the CRA and Viking. From the aerial view, if you can see, the area just north of the red box, that land area, is primarily owned by the CRA, and the area that's south of that red box is owned by Viking. So there's an agreement that was approved by the CRA board previously that states, following the abandonment process, the property would be divided evenly into an eastern section and a western section, and half of the ownership would go to Viking and half would go to the CRA. What that'll help do is create an actual block configuration and allow for there to be enough land area for future development. If you can see by, there's current green lines on there, and what those green lines are showing, and this is an aerial shot from the property appraisers website, those green lines are showing how the property is divided. So with its current configuration, it would be very difficult to build really anything on those lots. So by going through this abandonment process and splitting the property in an eastern and western portion, it allows both future property owners to have enough land to develop into a larger project.
So let me make sure that I'm understanding. Looking at the lower bottom of the land plats, Viking owns all of that.
Yes.
And the city, CRA, owns everything above that. And I'm trying to understand, did you say that Viking is going to get a portion of this in terms of the land swap, or?
Correct. So.
And what portion, if you can take your little red and just go straight across the portion that you're going to allocate to Viking?
If you viewed the entire land area as a box, so we're going to look east of Broadway, north of. so, we're gonna look east of Broadway, north of 12th Street, south of West 13th Street, which is the larger right-of-way to the north, and then from Avenue E west, if we drew a box, and I'll get the pointer here. So, this is the land area that we're talking about.
Right, and Viking owns the bottom half of that.
Viking owns this portion.
Correct.
And the CRA has control of this sliver portion. So, once the abandonment occurs, it would split down the middle. And then, the northern portion would go to the northern property owner. The southern portion would go to the southern property owner. But the land agreement and swap that's in place basically states that once this abandonment occurs, this will turn into one block, and then it will be divided down the middle with Viking having control of one half and the CRA having control of the other half.
Okay, so that's actually where the split is going to take place.
Correct.
Okay, so, that's why I wanted to ask that question, to get a clear clarification and understanding, so it would determine if I needed to drive other questions or not. So, I think you've made that a little bit clear. When you say that, could you discuss more of the swap? What aspect is going to be swapped eventually down the road? Which piece of this is gonna be swapped? And what is Viking going to get in exchange?
So, I don't have the agreement in front of me. But again, Viking has control of the southern portion, and the CRA has control of this portion. So, what Viking would end up having is control of this area. So, they would have control of this area that's currently owned by the CRA. And inversely, the CRA would gain control of this portion that's currently owned by Viking. So, that way, there would be two larger parcels within this master block that would provide a better opportunity for future development.
Okay, I'm gonna yield our questions. I may come back, but I'll let someone else jump in.
Okay, so, we've heard from Mr. Nakumbe and Ms. Clark.
I had a follow-up question.
Okay, you're acknowledged.
So, just to be clear, it seems that is Viking essentially just getting free land with this abandonment? Like, do they have to, what's the, what are they, what's the cost to them for acquiring this additional?
That's a good question. So, with any sort of abandonment of right-of-way, it actually can't be sold. Land cannot be sold if it's right-of-way. So, the benefit to the city is really to the CRA because of the land area that's gained. And really, the potential benefit is to be able to redevelop that portion of the Marina uplands. Because with the current configuration and those current small parcels, there really isn't the ability to come in and do a larger development.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
One second, Mr. Hunt. I'm gonna go down the, my normal procedure is to go down the board and ask, so that way, everyone gets their questions answered. So, Mr. Nakumbe, are you done with your question?
For now, yes.
Hey, Ms. Clark, did you have anything additional at the moment?
So, thanks for the clarification that you said that this right-of-way cannot be ever sold. So, therefore, does that mean there's not a monetary value to what I consider, even though it seems small, but it is oceanfront waterfront property? So, there's not a monetary value to that, or yes or no?
So, as it exists as right-of-way, that cannot be sold. Once the right-of-way is abandoned and turns into real property, then it's something that could be bought or sold. With the property swap that is currently discussed between Viking and the CRA, it's not necessarily a monetary figure. But if you look at the land area that's proposed here, the CRA owning the northern portion and Viking owning the southern portion, it appears, just based on the visual, that Viking owns maybe thirty percent more land than the CRA. So, once you actually reconfigure the land, it appears for this specific block that it's actually additional land for the CRA.
Right, and that's my question, that at some point in time, it becomes real property. And it becomes valuable. And also, too, it can be sold to someone else. And also, too, I wanna make sure I'm understanding that in this swap, that the entity that is going to make a swap is gonna make all good faith efforts to continue with the swap, not change the terms and conditions of the swap midstream. Because now, this becomes a little bit more valuable to someone who could use it down the road for some other particular use. Because the fact of the matter is, it's near the water. So, I don't know if that has to be addressed or clarified with the CRA. I wanna understand how solid is this arrangement of the swap? Because in the past, it has not been solid. It's been rather weak. And we, as a city, and members who were on the city council in the past, have been maybe advised to really make this a solid deal if it happens to come up again in the future as a swap, and here we are today.
Yeah, I believe that since both parties have agreed to the swap already, that if a party were not to move forward, that they would be in breach of that agreement. I'll just say that's my opinion, I'm not a land use attorney. I don't wanna make that statement and have somebody rely on that. But the agreement has already been approved. So, I think that would be the document that would guide the process moving forward.
Is there a way, just to give us for peace of mind, really a solid answer on that? Because again, I wanna go back into history, as I know as a resident, that that was not always the case. Terms were changed in midstream, and it was not in the best interest of the city of Riviera Beach. Especially when we were trying to get the Marina District project off the ground and make our city what it needs to be with this whole area of the district.
Yeah, I don't think I can provide any additional guarantee. I think your question is a valid question. Because once it does become real property, there's limited ways of compelling parties to do certain things with it, unless it's, you know, built into the agreement already. And I really can't speak to that further, unfortunately.
Exactly, and that's why I was saying, perhaps maybe Mr. Evans can give that clarity of information.
Let me just say something, Ms. Clark. Say, for instance, this wasn't the CRA, or it wasn't Viking involved, okay? And as the property owners around here, if they wanted to come together, because they're the property owners, to do an abandonment, they're allowed to do that. And as Mr. Gagin so stated and mentioned earlier, if, say that don't, we abandon the project, we abandon this right-of-way, and something go wrong with Viking. We, as the CRA or the city, we still won't lose out because once it's abandoned, the other side take the north half, and the other one take the south half of it. So, that's a done deal. They add it or replat it, it has to be replatted after that. So, it's still, for some reason, if the swap goes wrong or bad, Viking does not gain anything.
Okay, because I'm a novice, I'm going to just ponder that and marinate it a little more.
Okay, they won't gain anything. We're gonna split it down the middle, and that's like a normal, any abandonment, when you have multiple property owners, you're gonna abandon it, and they're gonna split it, and then they gotta go back and replat it.
Okay.
So, at the worst scenario, if nothing get done, we abandon this, and it goes to council, and it get approved. And they're gonna get half, and we're gonna get half. And we have to replat the property.
Okay, thank you.
So, nobody gains anything.
Okay.
Okay? Does that help?
I think so. I'm just gonna, again, continue to marinate on it, but thank you.
I think what would've been helpful is maybe we had a copy of the agreement, and we could see actually what was going to take place.
I would've read that in advance.
Right. Okay, Mr. Brown?
My questions have been addressed so far. I've passed by this, please. I mean, most days. I never often wondered why something wasn't done with that before, so...
Right, I think it's been currently used as overflow parking.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, once this is done, there's going to be no parking allowed on that, on those parcels?
Well, it's still probably be some type of overflow parking, you know? Because right now, when we have the big event, like fifteen hundred people, and we only have, right now, the Marina, where we only have the capacity of four hundred parking spaces, that's used as overflow parking right now.
Do you have any further questions or comments, Mr. Brown?
That's it so far.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hunt?
My question is, if there're going to be, at least at this point, any other road vacations in the Marina District needed to be able to create the parcels that will help attract new investors? Or is this likely to be the only road vacation that we're gonna see for the next number of hours or minutes, maybe?
So, if I can go back in time and try to remember the Marina uplands process and the master plan that was approved, this is one of the elements that was discussed during that process. There was some discussion of potentially modifying block structure in the future. But this would be like a phase two, phase three, where there's already been substantial development in the Marina uplands, to the extent where the design required modification of the roadway structure to support that new development. So, I don't wanna say that there would never be any modifications in the future. I can say, for reference, in the past, there have been other modifications, abandonments, easements, things of that nature, to facilitate the Marina uplands that we see today in order to ensure that all that infrastructure is in the ground and we're prepared for redevelopment. But at this time, this is the only proposal for abandonment.
But for the moment, traffic on 12th Street and the new 13th Street and C Street is sufficient to cover what the Marina needs, at least.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Mr. Gallin?
No question.
Madam Chair, just a couple more questions, please. The way that it's split that you've articulated, was there any reason why Viking got the frontage and Riviera Beach got the back in terms of what's happening with the master plan of the Marina District? And also, second question, the way that the Viking land is right now, that is completely fenced off, which is a clear indication of no trespassing by anyone. And so, now with the split, it's gonna be a bigger stretch of fence, moving from the end of 12th Street all the way up to 12th Street and coming down to where that split is. I'm pretty sure they're going to put that fencing up, too. But I'm just curious, how did, how was it determined that they got the frontage and Riviera Beach got the back?
The conversation previously was, the CRA was attempting to attract a development on the eastern portion that would have some sort of synergy with the event center. There was conversation of a green market building. I haven't seen any movement on that recently.
Could you use your red light when you describe the locations? So that we are on the same page in terms of proximity?
Sure, so, the portion that would go to the CRA after the property swap is approved, well, the property swap has been approved, sorry, after the abandonment is approved, this portion on the eastern half, there was conversations that the Marina Event Center, which is currently existing, this is probably the newest building in the uplands, that there would be a good synergy between these two lots. While Viking, which is, you know, a private entity, wants to have the roadway frontage for, you know, potentially commercial uses, retail uses. So, it was more valuable to Viking to have that roadway frontage. And in the previous conversations, having the property adjacent to the existing parking may help facilitate a parking garage in the future or may help facilitate other Marina uses that would be better connected at that area of land.
In terms of the master plan, I'm guessing for the city that the portion tied to the center over there, that we have pretty much an idea of what we're gonna do with it now. It was gonna be a market that may not be in a pipeline, I don't know anymore. And, you know, what are we gonna do with that? And then Viking has, you know, the frontage. It seems that they've gotten more acreage, and they've gotten the frontage, and they apparently, to me, in my opinion, got more value in size as well as frontage. But that's just my opinion.
Are you saying they got the park closer to the old town?
I'm sorry?
They got the park...
Speaking to the microphone.
No, they got all of that front, once the split happens. All of that going towards Broadway from corner to corner of 13th Street to 12th Street is all theirs. Frontage and a little bit more extra land. That's what we've sacrificed as a city to have the connectivity to the center.
So, Ms. Clark, why are you saying that you feel like the city is losing out? We're closer to the water. Once our swap comes into effect, we're closer to the, we got more of a water view than off of Broadway.
Foot traffic is everything in real estate. And frontage drives that in terms of visibility to who you are, they can see you. And I think Mr. Gagin mentioned retail, that's all foot traffic. So, that's why it makes it valuable in real estate.
Good point, Ms. Clark. Mr. Brown, you have a question or a comment to add?
Yes, I can see where, I mean, the proximity to the Marina, I can see where it would be beneficial to the city to have that closer, you know, one parcel. But does Viking have a plan for that parcel there? You know? What do they plan to do with it?
We don't have a current plan submitted by Viking.
No plans?
They could possibly sell it the way that it's configured, will be configured. It makes it valuable.
Okay, so, we're gonna move on to comments from Mr. Wiley. I know he's just joined us. Mr. Wiley, I don't know if you've had a chance to review the information before the meeting, but at, okay, so, we're on board discussion. So, at this point, you can make your comments or pose your questions if you have any.
Well, studying from what I read about the property, like I say, I'm on board with Mrs. Clark, with the property, not knowing what the intention of the property would be, I'm thinking in this situation to where it would be good to have a plan to kinda see what they're gonna do with that property because it could actually benefit the city also. Have something that's gonna benefit the city. But like you said, if we give away something like that, at the same time, you know, it makes the property more valuable, they can turn around and sell it to something that the city probably is something that we don't want. And I see that probably as being an issue unless we know what their proper plan is gonna be. Because that's the biggest thing I think we had with Stony Brook, is that we spoke of that part of abandoning something and then not knowing what the intentions were.
Is that a question for staff?
I mean, well, not so much a question, just, I guess, an observation, I guess. But would it be in a way possible for us to find out what the proper plans would be for that? And would that be something that we submitted to us before we make a decision on that?
So, we haven't received any recent plans from Viking. I know that the CRA had recently entertained an RFP for redevelopment of the entire Marina Upland area.
Right.
I think that's still in review and discussion at a city council level. So... So i- if the abandonment were to occur and the property swap to occur, that would then become one larger parcel that would be divided into two parcels. The eastern portion would be accessible by whoever wins that, that RFP award. So, you know, they would have a larger land area that would be adjacent to the Marina Uplands that, you know, they might be able to facilitate more redevelopment. And I think, uh, to Ms. Harper's point, oftentimes that water view does have value, so the roadway frontage has value. But if you could imagine if both property owners built, uh, four stories high, you know, the, the eastern building would actually have the water view, while the western, uh, property owner would have a blocked view, um, because you'd have another building in the way. So, you know, I guess it, it depends on your perspective as far as what's, what's more valuable to you at any given time.
Right.
Do you have any additional comments or questions, Mr. Wiley?
No, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Um, Ms. Watson? Ms. An- Andrea? Is Viking here?
Uh, no, we have the agent here, um, would you like to hear from him?
If they would like to speak with the board, be in agreement to hearing from the agent for Viking?
Well, and, and, I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair, the, the applicant is the CRA. So Viking has, um, signed off in the agreement that's gone to the CRA board as far as the property swap, but, um, the CRA has, has provided application to the city requesting this abandonment.
So you're saying, no, they can't come to the podium?
I'm, I'm saying Viking is not present tonight, Viking's not, uh, involved in this application beyond the fact that they have, um, agreed to the property swap.
Okay, so if we don't have any additional board questions or comments, then we have to make a decision.
I have one more question. Any future development would have to come through us, or the city council, so it shouldn't matter.
Okay, so if there's no other comments, then we need a motion of some sort to move on.
Aye, so move.
Second.
Point of order, can we clarify that we're, the motion is to approve item A under new business? Okay?
Yes.
Madam Chair, um...
We have a, a motion in a second, currently on the floor. So now, are there any questions?
If some of the questions that I had asked that we did not get answers to tonight, I would feel more comfortable just to have clarity with those answers, because I want to make sure, I think this is a big deal. And I want to make sure that I'm clear on the ramifications of my vote, whether it's yes or whether it's no. And there were just a few questions that I think Mr. Gaggen would have to defer to the CRA to get back with us on, and I would feel comfortable. I look at this as if I own the land, and how my thought process would be in this type of transaction, whether I'm the applicant or whether I'm the entity that's being swapped. So that's how I'm looking at this. Do I have enough information if I, um, if that were me, to, to do this sort of transaction?
So noted, but there's a motion in a second on the floor, so we have to continue with the vote, see how the vote goes. If it, if it fails, then someone can make a new motion. So we, we're ready for roll call.
James Gallin?
Yes.
Anthony Brown?
Yes.
William Wiley?
Yes.
Stephen Hunt?
Yes.
Evelyn Harris Clark?
No.
Mowetina Kumbey?
No.
Renee Burgess?
No.
That vote passed with Ms. Evelyn Harris Clark and Mowetina Kumbey dissenting.
All right, thank you. Onto item B.
I'm sorry, and Ms. Burgess dissenting.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Item B under new business is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, approving site plan application SP dash eighteen dash twenty-two to reconfigure the existing warehouse, office and showroom, interior space and parking for Newman Windows and Doors located at sixteen forty-nine Avenue L, associated with parcel control numbers fifty-six, forty-three, forty-two, twenty-nine, one-one, zero-one, six-zero, zero-three-one, as well as fifty-six, forty-three, forty-two, twenty-eight, thirty-one, zero-one, six, zero-zero, three-one, having industrial future land use designation and a general industrial zoning designation and providing for an effective date. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Joe Su Ledger, our senior planner, to provide the board and general public with a PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Ledger?
Good evening, Joe Su Ledger, Development Services.
Good evening.
The, uh, application request before you, um, it's, it's a ren- it's an interior renovations that the existing business is actually doing, the, the business is already there. They're doing renovations, however, there is no site plan on records for the particular property, and the property is actually two different properties, so they are required to replat the property. So because they're replating the property, they must undergo the site plan, um, process to, um, pretty much, uh, memorialize the structure that's already in existence. Um, as, as, uh, mentioned earlier, um, the request is, is for interior renovations for Newman Windows and Doors, which currently uses, um, its, its ware- wholesaling warehouse for, um, impact windows and doors. Just to give you a brief, um, idea of where the subject property is located, it's within the southwest corner of West Seventeenth Street and Avenue L. As you could see, um, this is lot one and lot two. There is a plat application that is associated with the site plan, and you'll, you'll be able to see it better, um, once, in that presentation. Um, the future land use for the subject property is industrial. It has a general industrial IG zoning district. Uh, this is just a, a blow up of, of, of the, uh, blowout of, of the, um, property. As you could see, the structure already exists. You have, um, Building A and Building B, which is a small building. Even though it's two different lots, uh, the use is currently utilized the property as if it was one property. Again, the lot size of the subject property is two point forty-one acres. The gross floor area is thirty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-seven square feet. Again, currently, access to the property, there are multiple access to the property, um, to the north. And you have parking here, and you have an additional access here. The applicant is actually, as part of the site plan approval process, staff, um, discussed with the applicant to, to actually improve, um, circulations or parking within, within the proposal, which we believe currently, I'm not sure if everyone, if anyone has been to the site or familiar with the area, um, staff believes it is not as it exists right now in the best configurations. And we were able to get the applicant to actually, uh, modify that and improve the site. For reference, um, just back on the access, as, as I mentioned earlier, there were several cuts here. They were able to re- reduce it to two, where you'll be able to ingress here, go one way here and exit there, also ingress here. Again, the existing ingress at the eastern portion of the property. For reference, this is, um, they're also improving the landscaping within, within the sites. So this is the, the landscape plan. As customary, uh, staff recommends approval of the site plan application with, uh, the six conditions of approval provided in the staff report. I'm just going to briefly, um, verbalize these, um, customary, um, standards, uh, conditions of approval, for the record. A two-year landscaping performance bond for a hundred and ten percent of the value of landscaping and irrigation shall be required before a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of completion is issued. Constructions and landscaping improvements must be initiated within eighteen months of the effective date of this resolution. In accordance with section thirty-one dash sixty, parentheses B, of the city coordinances, demolition, site preparation and/or land clearing shall not be considered construction. Building permit application and associated plans and documents shall be submitted in its entirety and shall not be accepted by city staff in partial or incomplete manner. This development mu- must receive final certificate of occupancy from the city for all buildings and units approved within five years of the approval of the adopted resolution or the adopted resolution shall be considered null and void, requiring the applicant to resubmit application for site plan and special exceptions approval and re-initiate a site plan approval process. All future advertising must state that the development is located within the city of Riviera Beach. Fees and penalties in accordance with City Code section thirty-one dash five fifty-four will be levied against the property owner and/or business for violation of this condition. Once approved, this resolution shall supersede any previous site plan approval resolutions associated with this property, causing previous site plan approval resolution to be null and void. City councils authorize the city staff to approve future amendments to the site plan administratively so long as the site plan does not deviate greater than five percent from the original approved site plan. This concludes my presentation for the site plan. I'm here to answer any questions. If none, I will refer to the applicant.
Do we have any questions at this time from staff, for staff?
Madam Chair?
Um, you're acknowledged, Mr. Hunt?
Uh, I've been by the property and, uh, my impression is that the landscaping is a huge improvement from what is, uh, currently there. Is that common for any future, uh, programs and projects within that neighborhood? So that anybody else who comes in is going to have to equal that same standard going forward?
Correct, whenever, uh, a property or an applicant, um, has to go through the site plan approval process, um, staff does their best to, to see if the, if the applicant can come to, uh, to a consensus where they agree to improve, um, the landscape of the property, even sometimes they're not required to. So, we, we try our best to, to get something, um, that is up to code.
But that is, the, the, staff will go to the future, uh, uh, organizations in the same area that try another project to get to the same level of landscaping in the future. How about the painting and cleaning up of the fac- the outside of the building itself? Uh, didn't see any real reference to that. I'm, I'm sure they don't want a lovely landscape and have the current building just look as it is.
I, I would defer to the applicant, but I, there will, there will be, um, some sort of, um, small, um, improvements to, to the windows and, and painting as well to the property, but the applicant can definitely...
That's not part of the application, what they've said they're going to do?
No, there, so this application, um, is not really doing anything beyond the scope of the interior renovations. There are, however, um, windows, um, relocations, which can be done via building permits.
Sure.
So that's why you're not seeing too much emphasis on that as of now. But there will be, um...
Is it too dangerous to ask them to also, uh, address the issue of at least painting and cleaning up the rust and, and crud around some of the existing windows and things of that sort? I'm sure that they don't, they don't want to have that be the image for customers, I'm sure, so. I'm, I'm assuming the right thing, but, uh, assumptions can be a problem.
I don't think it's a bad thing to, to ask. Hopefully, they'll be able to address that within their presentation.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Not for me, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, John Schmidt, agent for the applicant, uh, Newman Windows and Doors. Thank you for your, uh, time this evening. And I don't have much more to add, but a little history and I can do some clarification as well for you as we, as we move forward. Thank you. Again, uh, tonight, we're going to be asking for two things, it's a major site plan amendment. Uh, there's, uh, multiple, uh, non-conformities on the site, the access point, uh, the amount of green space that's on there, uh, some of the architecture, and, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're asking for this approval tonight so we can move forward to do those improvements. So, uh, you know, an approval tonight will help us, uh, get to the next level and then write in for building permit. So we're anxious to get going as well. Uh, we're also have the concurrent application that they spoke about, which is the, uh, plat amendment to, uh, bring the property into one overall property. Uh, that's the site, y- you've seen, here's some existing pictures that you're talking about, you know, of, uh, the site and how it looks today. And certainly, uh, Mr. Newman has already put in over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of improvements, and it's really been maintenance. Uh, the previous owner of this, it was a bottling company, I think it was Canada Drive was in there. It's, uh, been left to disrepair. Uh, Mr. Newman moved in in March. Uh, we need to go through this approval process, he's allowed to maintain things, but he's got another over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, of, uh, once his approve, improvements to be put on here. So will be over a million and a half dollars of improvements, uh, once this is, uh, complete. Um, this is a more illustrative, uh, id- identity, uh, what we're doing here, and it's, uh, reconfiguring the circulation and parking. You know, we're removing those, uh, four cuts that are along there, adding a bunch of new green space, and, uh, actually reducing the parking that's along that right away. You can see that, you know, right now, it's, there's a, there's four dead end rows that'll go to one continuous flow over there at, at a forty-five. And this is, uh, the site is, uh, for Newman Windows and Doors, there'll be a showroom here. So we certainly want to make it a great experience for people to come and see, you know, what we're doing here. We're also, um, uh, enclosing some, uh, some area that was under canopy, so we're adding approximately eighteen hundred square feet, uh, on the perimeter of the building and interior that wasn't, had a current build out, was just really kind of warehouse space. And then these are all the areas that we're adding greenery, uh, you know, along those right away. So it's pretty ver- barren out there, and, uh, we'll bring this up to speed. You saw the condition of approval for the hundred and ten percent of the bond, so, you know, if he were to fail, you could actually pull the bond. Uh, but that won't be necessary, he, he's a good neighbor. And the property directly to the east is a more recent development, and you'll see us get more compatible there and, uh, and, 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 uh, improve the whole area, uh, as, as we move forward. Uh, staff findings were consistent with the comp plan, uh, were consistent with the code. You know, we're cleaning up a bunch of non-conformities, we're compatible with the surrounding uses. Uh, there's no, uh, uh, effect on the natural environment. We're consistent with the current development patterns, and, uh, we do have adequate public facilities. Uh, Mr. Newman was in, uh, unincorporated Palm Beach County, he was over at Vista Center. Um, he, uh, bought this building, uh, they're currently operating out of there, brought over sixty-five employees, and now you're seeing, uh, some of the employees also migrate and buy houses in the community. We've already seen four to six, you know, some of them, you know, uh, live together, so we've already seen that, uh, come over here. I think it's a good job base and, um, uh, you know, he's doing a nice job. I do have, um, some elevations in here, uh, for you. I, I wasn't really, we didn't really color them up, but, you know, some of the windows out there, you know, are, are, are tired, and that's what he does for a living, so I think you're going to see a major improvement to this building and the overall site. So, uh, I do have Mr. Newman here, if you have any questions for him, and, uh, happy to bring him up here. But other than that, um, you know, we would like, uh, your approval this evening to move forward.
All right, thank you. We'll start with board comments, since we don't have any public comment cards submitted. Mr. Nakumbe?
No comment.
Ms. Ms. Clark?
Thank you for your time. It's, um, very straightforward. I just have one question on the outer perimeters, in terms of the land that are outside of those lands. You have sufficient interior parking, so because it's a commercial business and you've got trucks and you've got cars, um, because the boundaries are such, has it limited the possibility of vehicles or trucks parking outside of those perimeters?
Well, actually, one of the non-conformities is there wasn't enough parking on site, so we've had to create, we've had to create some parking. And that parking striping has went interior, so you won't see any, I, I know some of the businesses in the area have that problem where they don't have... And then, we've also added this row of parking here, and this is where the, the customer experience is, that's where the front door is going to be, so we've added that parking as well. And then, we, you know, we limited the ones that weren't really working so well over here, it just really kinda cleaned up the, the site.
Okay, so you brought that up, interior, so there's not the propensity to have it exterior?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Very nice design.
Thank you.
And there are a number of non-conformity issues, like drainage, the green space, setbacks. Are they grandfathered in, or?
Yeah, the, well, let's talk about this building, you know, these buildings had building permit, they don't meet current codes, so we've had to identify those on the plans, the five non-conformities that you see on there. So, those are really kinda grandfathered in, and they're getting vested with this. There are some drainage problems, if you've been past the site over in this area. We've, we've gotta go in and when we redo this parking, it's, it's because, you know, there, because there's four different drive aisle, oop, let me back up here. It's because the drainage really isn't flowing correctly in here, so when we remove this and remove this spot, we're going to be repaving this and regrading and, and putting catch basins in to take care of that drainage. So, there's a little drainage problem right there and a little drainage problem right there. They're both going to get fixed with our, with our raise and rebuild there, or ungrading.
I'm done.
Mr. Wiley?
No comment.
Mr. Hunt?
My compliments to Mr. Newman and to the entire team that are doing this. It's gonna be a huge upgrade for the area, and I wish you well and hope that there's a serious parking problem because you have too many customers altogether. No further comments.
Mr. Brown?
Together. No question.
I just have one question. If you could go back to the new design and kinda show me the route of the trucks when they're gonna make their deliveries.
So, the truck, this is, this canopy space right here is a pull-through canopy space, so the way that, that they operate is that the trucks, you know, the trucks come in here and, and pull in, they're loaded with their windows for the day. They can either pull out this way, or they can pull out this, they can pull out this way. So, when you come in the morning, you know, you're assigned, hey, you're going up to, you know, you're going to West Palm to replace a window, you're going up to Jupiter, so his, his teams kind of stage up in this canopy area, and then they go out in either one of those paths. There's also one that you can, you know, pull directly through as well. So, the truck, the truck traffic is separate from the more pedestrian traffic that you're seeing along the building here and the building here. Certainly, you know, we've got workers, you know, parking within, but, you know, they're working within the property. It's all gated, there's a gated point right here that's not open to the public, so there's a gate there, it's currently there and getting reconfigured with our parking, and then there's also a gate, I think, right here, if I remember it.
Okay, nice. When do, when is the business expected to be open after all of the renovations are completed?
Well, the business, they've actually had their BTR, and they've been operating since March there. These are improvements that need to be done to the site, and you saw that our timeframes, you know, we have to commence the development within eighteen months and be done within five. I mean, honestly, it was ready to go about six months ago, you know, we were, we've gotta go through building permit now and excited to get going.
Well, being that we just had a hurricane scare, and I know I have, like, two windows left in my house, that are not hurricane impact, I'll be looking forward to visiting once the renovations are completed. Okay, are there any other board questions? Okay, so we're ready for a motion. Oh, Mr. Wiley?
Sorry, so it's, I just wanted to ask about, I know you noticed about the gates, you said about the gates where the trucks coming in?
Yes.
Now, as far as your security issues, and I know this is something I know you're gonna take care of, I just wanted to get enlightenment on it. Will there be guard shack, someone here to, to monitor that, or?
No.
Is the whole facility gated?
Well, the, the, so the gates, the gates operating right here, so what's getting secured is all the loading area in the back, so all this area is being secured. This is non-secure area up, up along the front of the building.
That's all public.
That's all public, the public realm up here. Our security gates are here, so you're gonna, you know, you're gonna gate that area off all the way through here, and then a gate here. So, operationally during the day, they might be left open as, you know, as workers come in and out, but at night, that'll be a secured area.
Got it. Got it. Just wanna make sure, 'cause especially for safety reasons.
You did a great job. Yeah, that's exactly right. We just, we would close it at night to lock it up.
You have to come up, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tad Newman with Newman Windows at the address of sixteen forty-nine Avenue L. John pretty much covered it all. It's, the fence is gonna be actually a chain link fence, and it'll be eventually an automatic one where we can click our way in for the trucks. And when we say trucks, my trucks aren't tractor trailers like you see in the picture. My trucks are F-two-fifties with open-top eighteen-foot trailers. If you've ever been out here in the mornings or in the afternoons when my trucks are leaving or coming back, they're, they're very clearly wrapped, and, and we haul windows and doors in the back of the open-top trailers. They're like a tandem equipment trailers with sides, so. So, that's what we park there at night, and that's why we wanna secure it, because our equipment is parked outside.
Right.
During the day, the trucks, like you see in the picture, the tractor trailers, those are my delivery trucks. I don't manufacture there. I store the windows, and then I sell and install windows, so I don't manufacture them, and the manufacturer will be dropping them off to me like PGT or CGI or Pella or Anderson. They would come out back, park underneath the canopy, and our forklifts would unload them, and then they would pull out the other side.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Okay, so we're ready for a motion?
Yes, um, the microphone. I'll make a motion, how about you second? Okay.
I second, I second the motion.
I make a motion that the board approve the site plan application for the reconfiguration of the existing warehouse interior space and parking for Newman Windows and Doors, having an industrial future land use designation and a general industrial zoning designation. That's the motion.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
James Gallin?
Yes.
Anthony Brown?
Yes.
William Wiley?
Yes.
Stephen Hunt?
Yes.
Evelyn Harris Clark?
Yes.
Moeti Nakumbe?
Yes.
Rene Burgess?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one final item, excuse me, under new business. That was the add-on item for the plat, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Viver Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, approving the plat application, P-A-dash-eighteen-dash-zero-three, to replat two contiguous lots associated with sixteen forty-nine Avenue L, known by parcel control numbers fifty-six, forty-three, forty-two, twenty-nine, eleven, zero-one, six, zero-zero, three-one, as well as fifty-six, forty-three, forty-two, twenty-eight, thirty-one, zero-one, six, zero-zero, three-one, totaling two-point-four-one acres of land and providing for an effective date. I'll once again ask Mr. Ledger to provide a presentation, free presentation to the Planning and Zoning Board as well as staff and public.
Thank you. Once again, thank you. This is the plat that I mentioned earlier that's associated with this property. It's very similar in terms of the presentation, and I'll just point out anything that just may catch your attention. Again, the request before you, it's to replat the two contiguous lots associated with sixteen forty-nine Avenue L, known by parcel control numbers. Jeff already mentioned them in the record. This is a better depictions of, you know, the two different lots. You have Lot One here and Lot Two, and you have, again, Lot One, which is currently two-point-zero-six acre, and Lot Two, which is currently point-thirty-four acre. So, this slide pretty much shows you, the middle line just goes away, the property becomes one right now, for a total of two-point-four-one acres combined. This is the, for reference, this is the actual first cover, the cover page for the plat, and that's page one of the plat, and this is page two of the plat, identifying Lot One, Lot Two, which will become one lot. This concludes the presentation for the replat. I'm willing to answer any questions. If not, I'll defer to the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
No questions, seeing none?
Yes, I've got questions, yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Is there reason for having two lots instead of one?
Currently, it's two.
It is gonna be two on this plat?
It's gonna be one, yeah. When they replat it, it's gonna be only one lot.
No. The plat I'm looking at, it says plat Lot One and Lot Two, so there are two lots.
They're turning it into one lot.
Yeah, that's not what the plat says. If you have two lots, that is what is gonna be the plat, Lot One and Lot Two.
I see what you're saying, Mr. Brown. This is almost existing conditions that's shown here versus a master boundary description, which would just be one lot.
What I'm saying is that, when you have a plat and it says Lot One and Lot Two, there you're creating two lots, not one.
Right, and I think, I don't understand why, but this is the current configuration, and that's what we're trying to change. We don't wanna have two lots, we just wanna have one lot, so...
Well, you are having two lots.
That would result in the same configuration that, that we currently have, so that's, that's not what the intent is. The intent is to have one large boundary plat, which would incorporate both, both Lot One and Lot Two and create a new master lot.
You're correct. My other question was, does the city require easements for utilities on the lot?
So, that was one of the questions from staff. It was strange enough, I, I, one of our comments was, it looks like there is no easement allocated as, as shown on the survey in the plat. Apparently, there is none, so I'm...
Yeah, this will be a chance to create an easement, so...
So, if there was any, for example, any, from a planning and zoning standpoint, again, we're not, we, we have a consultant that actually reviews the plats for us as well, city engineers, but from a planning and zoning standpoint, if there were some sort of access issues where they'll have to have some sort of access easement between the two lots, we will require for them to, to call for that. But that would just be from a planning and zoning standpoint. As far as any utility easement, the utility division reviewed the project, and they didn't have any opposition, so...
I understand. I'm saying, but if the city requires easements, and you want easements, this would be time to do it.
Understood. It looks, I didn't get any requests from our utility or city engineer, and planning and zoning, we didn't have any requests for an easement.
Just a question in terms of how it was presented from an organized standpoint. Yes, we just approved the site plan, and this was already in there, so I kinda got it, but typically, should this come before and then we go into the detail? It was just that I did all of the research, so I kinda knew this was gonna happen, but the viewing audience would not have known this, that I think this should've been step A, then the second for the site plan should've been step two or B, and it would've had a nice flow to it, if you will, and very easy to follow. It's like we're backtracking. But I, I get it, I voted already, I did the research, and I understood it.
I, I will, I will agree to the fact that it's, it's better when the plat goes first versus the site plan and this particular condition. The site plan was ready to go, and the plat, we still had hiccups, and until, as of late, we, they got it ready, so we, we took the opportunity and also make it go. But typically, we would prefer to have the plat first, combine the property first, then approve the site plan. But if the site plan goes first, it's not, it's not a nuisance neither, because the plat will now have to be consistent with the approved site plan.
Right, and, and I understand, and it may have come up if this was done secondary, not using this company, but another company, and there would've been some sort of utility problems. We would've done this secondary, but that should've been primary, and then addressed if there were any sort of irregularities of setbacks, utility lines, et cetera. So, that's just my thinking. I'm a project manager by nature, by trade, so that's why I have a different view of this than maybe folks that are looking at how we are processing this information. So, I'm just bringing my professional expertise into this process of how I do business.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So, at this point, this plat would not, I mean, you're creating two lots, so, I mean, they have to redo the plat if they need one lot.
I, I can address...
So, what my recommend, my recommendation would be, the, the entire intent of the plat is to replat the two lots into one lot, and, you know, the, the agent is, is present as well, I can confirm that. This is depicting the existing configuration, and I don't quite understand why it's depicting that. It should be one master lot, so I think that the, the Planning and Zoning Board, if they're comfortable moving forward, it would be approval with the condition that we are gonna create one master lot, a boundary lot, excuse me, a boundary plat for the two lots that would create one lot, because this is the existing condition, two lots. This is not what we're intending to do.
Yes, I would have no problem approving that, so. But this, this is two lots, so it doesn't work for you guys either.
I agree.
Okay, so, moving down to Mr. Wiley.
Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Sorry.
No comment, no comment.
Okay, Mr. Hunt?
No questions.
Mr. Gallin?
No question.
Okay, seeing no further questions or comments, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the creation of a single lot for the entire space depicted for the entire property that is currently lots one and two, and clearly define it as a single unified lot in the plat.
Second.
Second. Okay, can properly move to second, roll call?
Just clarification, was that second from Wiley or Evelyn Harris Clark?
Mrs. Clark.
Okay, thank you. James Gallin?
Yes.
Anthony Brown?
Yes.
William Wiley?
Yes.
Stephen Hunt?
Yes.
Evelyn Harris Clark?
Yes.
Moeti Nakumbe?
Yes.
Rene Burgess?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Thank you. Ready for item nine? Workshop items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as, a really brief intro to the workshop item we have tonight, which is a preliminary discussion of increased planning and zoning board involvement with long-range planning. I actually had the opportunity to have a conversation with Mr. Hunt, and he had some really good ideas, to the extent that we thought we should have a larger board conversation as far as some of the future activities of the board, some of the long-range planning that could be possible. We already know that the comprehensive plan amendments will be brought before the Planning and Zoning Board in the near future, however, there could be other coordination items amongst departments that could also be discussed at a Planning and Zoning Board level, as well as providing the opportunity for other departments to more or less get more face time during these meetings and be able to present some items and ongoing projects to the board and the general public as well. So, I guess without further ado, we have a really brief PowerPoint that... I actually had the opportunity to have a conversation with Mr. Hunt, and he had some really good ideas, to the extent that we thought we should have a larger board conversation as far as some of the future activities of the board, some of the long-range planning that could be possible. We already know that the Comprehensive Plan amendments will be brought before the Planning and Zoning Board in the near future. However, there could be other coordination items amongst departments that could also be discussed at a Planning and Zoning Board level, as well as providing the opportunity for other departments to more or less get more face time during these meetings and be able to present some items and ongoing projects to the board and the general public as well. So I guess without further ado, we have a really brief PowerPoint that Mr. Hunt had kind of sketched out some ideas to really facilitate board conversation and discussion. So at this point, if it pleases the board, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hunt.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I started the whole discussion with Mr. Gagnon, oh goodness, about two months ago. And, and bring this up because I have an instinct from my Air Force and my civilian experience that coordination of activities and initiatives avoids an awful lot of problems when you get down to implementation. And at the risk of being perceived to be slightly crude, the Air Force rule of that was prior planning prevents piss poor performance. And we would want to try to achieve a level of coordination and integration of initiatives, so there are no surprises, and there's no disappointments, and there's no, no serious issues that come up. And I think the most obvious ones in my personal experience have been where you pave a new street, and then 30 days, or 10 days, or in my case, one day later, the jackhammers are out to tear up the brand-new concrete and put in new water lines. So a little bit of prior planning can avoid an awful lot of tactical issues, and I think it also can improve substantially the communication, not only with the council persons responsible for their district, but also the citizens within that district to better understand what's coming up. So I started with the look at the city code, and what you have before you there on the slide is the actual city code highlighted three elements that say the Planning and Zoning Board will, or I'm sorry, shall, do three fundamental functions. And that is to participate in the planning process, to assess and monitor the progress and initiatives made in accordance with those plans, and also to coordinate all of the activities within the city. And it seems to me that's a pretty clear charter. It was admittedly written in 1956, as I understand it, but that's the current challenge to us. So what I am proposing, Jeff, would you go, I'm sorry, Mr. Gagnon, would you go to the next slide? What I'm proposing is two things. One is that we set up a future work session to resolve how best to approach this. This is a lot more complicated than we can have in a conversation today, so it would seem to me a work session at some point in the future would be the right step. And secondly, to bring in representatives from the Planning and Zoning Department staff, Mr. Gagnon's, the CRA, the Utility District, IT, which has responsibility for the geographical information system that helps keep track of all of that stuff, Public Works, Code Enforcement, and there may be others. Maybe we want to bring in the port and their representatives. The list can go on. I have had the pleasure of talking to Mr. Evans in the CRA, and Mr. Walker in the Utility District, and they both have told me privately that they think this would be a great idea, a way of bringing everything to the fore in an integrated way, rather than looking at it as project by projects ad hoc at a time. So the second step would be sorted out during the working session, but I think there's sort of three categories of planning and zoning board oversight that we could do. One is what I call coordination, and that would be a presentation by all of these representative organizations, maybe every two to three months, to do a six-month look ahead of here's what we're doing, and here's where that activity is, and just try to de-conflict any collisions of either timing or awareness of what's going on. The second would be to get a, maybe every six months, an update from these organizations about initiatives and progress on their existing strategic plans. The best example, as the board may be aware, in 2012, or 2013, the Utility District hired a contractor to do a long-range water and wastewater treatment, wastewater plan for the city. And it laid out a substantial initiative of, I think it was 200-plus million dollars' worth of initiatives that were needed. And in my discussions with Mr. Walker, he said, "We've made progress on about 20 to 25 million of that, but not the full 200." So there's still a lot of work to be done in terms of the current stated plans and the published plans that already exist. And thirdly, would be to participate in an orderly way in new long-range planning initiatives. Now, the CRA has already started the process of building a new CRA plan. The council, or the code requires Mr. Gagnon to do an update to the city comprehensive plan. And any of those other future plans that may come up, I think we should be engaged in the process of understanding both what are the initiatives, what's the strategy that's going on, and to be able to view the progress on those plans periodically during their development. Not just wait for it to be delivered to us in a final document ready for approval. And I would be delighted to hear the reactions and the comments from my colleagues and see whether or not we have a basis for proceeding to a workshop to make this a reality. Over to you.
Okay, Mr. Nakumbi?
I'm interested, what day would you have in mind?
I was thinking the next session of the Planning and Zoning Board could be turned into either partially a workshop, or we set another date if there's not enough other business for a regular meeting. I don't think we have to tear up personal schedules to do this. This is more a function of trying to get the right people together.
I definitely think it would be helpful for me.
Mrs. Clark? I'm sorry, Mr. Nakumbi, were you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mrs. Clark?
I think we had talked about going down this path, so I appreciate the time and energy that you took to put this together. And I, because of my schedule, would be open to a weekend or a time where I'm not in Miami. And I have done that with other boards, something very similar, and we've done this on a Saturday morning for half a day, and it worked very well. And the only thing that you have missing here is just my additional salary.
I think it is at the same rate that we're getting paid now.
Oh geez!
Don't tell us. That's awesome.
Free. Mr. Brown?
I think it's a good idea, I'm in.
Hey, Mr. Wiley?
Excellent job, Mr. Hunt. I think anytime, I'm ex-military days also, Marine Corps, anytime you put teamwork together, or put teams together to come up with a common idea, or come up with a common goal, and to be able to accomplish it, when you have more people involved, you get more ideas, you get better ideas. And I think that this would be something that'd be very successful, so definitely I'll open up my schedule to whatever's best for the board, for us to be able to come together and be able to look into different things. In that way, we have a nice, long-term view of where our city is going at. I'm really excited about the direction that our city is going in right now. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
I think it's highly likely we can accommodate to the schedules, and Mr. Gagnon and I can work out with all of the others to come up with a better idea, but we also need to hear from Mr. Gallin.
Mr. Gallin?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea also. We have been requesting this for a while now. I know since I've even been on the board. So, you know, I'm willing and able and ready.
I as well. I think, of course, you know, we'll bring the budget into it at some point. I know it was probably just approved, because where are we? We're September. Has your budget been approved already? Okay. Yeah, hopefully, everybody's seen their trim notice that was sent out from the property appraiser a couple of weeks ago. And I believe our mileage rate for Riviera Beach is increasing. Jeff? Sorry, Mr. Gagnon? No. But anyway, it went out a couple of weeks ago, so hopefully, everybody's seen that, because of, of course, when you attend the budget hearings, those are your opportunities at that point, and also us as a board, where we can make our suggestions for capital improvements. Okay, so we're all on the same page, so it's just working out a time and date that works for everyone to move ahead.
If I can suggest, at least the first step is try to incorporate it in our existing meeting schedule, and maybe take a baby step at either our next scheduled meeting or the meeting thereafter, and see if we have representatives from one or more of the divisions that were discussed, to see if they can start this discussion. I think it'll be a very large bite, so to speak, to try to do it all in one session, so I think we'll kind of maybe learn what process works best if we take a couple smaller steps, if that pleases the board.
Pleases me, works well. That way, like you said, it's a first step, we can see how it works, you know, allocate 30 minutes at the end, or have, you know, much time we'll need, depending on who's able to show. So, I agree with that. Do we need to vote on this? This is a workshop item, so I guess we're just up for a discussion at this point.
Yeah, I think it always helps to have a motion from the board, because it provides, you know, guidance within the meeting minutes for future reference as well.
Okay. I make a motion to proceed with the idea of a working session to sort through the details of how we can be better engaged in three tiers of planning, for one, coordination of near-term initiatives. Secondly, existing long-range planning progress and initiatives. And thirdly, new long-range planning initiatives that are started.
Second?
Okay. Roll call.
James Gallin?
Yes.
Anthony Brown?
Yes.
William Wiley?
Yes.
Stephen Hunt?
Yes.
Evelyn Harris-Clark?
Yes.
Oete Nakumbi?
Yes.
Renee Burgess?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item 10, public comments. Do we have any public comment cards?
No, ma'am.
Moving on to item B, correspondence.
No correspondence tonight, Madam Chair.
Okay, item C, Planning and Zoning Board comment. So item 1, project updates. You gave us a list. Thank you.
Yes. So the format was kind of difficult to put in PowerPoint presentation, so I'll just reference the Word document. There's really two major sections of projects. There's a header that states, "Public Hearing Review and Approval." So those are the items that are either currently within the public process, as far as having to go before the Planning and Zoning Board and City Council for review and approval. You may notice that some of these projects are currently active. Some are, you know, before the board today, currently. Number 2, we just discussed. 3, 4, 5, and 6 had previously come before the Planning and Zoning Board and has been approved by City Council. So the projects were attempted to be listed by project number, not necessarily by their current status, but I'd be happy to provide additional information on the status of any of these. The second header, which states, "Administrative Site Plan Review and Approval," these are items that are being approved on a staff level. So these are the projects that won't come before the Planning and Zoning Board or City Council. In order to receive administrative site plan approval, they'd have to be really proposing something that wouldn't have a large-scale impact or a major change of use of a property, something that would be considered just a renovation to existing, and not really changing any large footprints of the existing site. So these projects also are in various stages, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Are there any board questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Gagnon, yes, definitely, status where they are in the pipeline would be helpful. Also, too, I see that, for the lack of words, you have these unique identifiers assigned to each of the project. So my question would be, is it possible to delineate exactly what the project is, or do I have to come to your office, look up with these unique identifiers, and understand what's going on with these projects? Because I'm not clear exactly what they are and, you know, in the pipeline and what the status is. How does that work?
I understand. I can modify, and really, probably if I use an Excel spreadsheet or a different format, it might be better to identify where these projects are as far as currently being reviewed, or have been approved by P&amp;Z, City Council, things like that. In order to really get the full understanding of a project, I'm happy to provide, you know, all the backup information that we have. I don't know what the best format would be to, you know, really provide all of the project narrative and the plans, and all the components that are involved with each individual project. So this is really supposed to be a starting point for reference, so if there's a certain address that pops up and you do want to follow up, or if there's additional information we can provide, then we'll have at least that starting point.
Right, I understand. Again, I'm a project manager, and I don't want to make it labor-intensive, but the idea that if I knew what status it was in, then I can prioritize where my focus in terms of information gathering needs to be. So I'm just managing my personal life as well as the P&amp;Z board time, so I can be effective as a board member and give a sufficient amount of time, knowing what, where it is in the pipeline status, and what exactly it is. And then I can go from there as to how I need to gather information. So it doesn't have to be labor-intensive, but just enough depth to get us going.
Understood.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Hunt.
I think, Ms. Clark, that is exactly why I think the next step of the workshop is crucial, because this is a great start to at least know what's on Mr. Gagnon's point. But if we had a similar list from the Utility District and the Public Works Department, we would end up with a much longer list. So I think there's, the workshop will be a great opportunity to address your points and try to figure out how best we can assemble it. I'm more of a graphics kind of a guy, and so I think the presentation with a map and where projects lie on the map can be a helpful part of it as well. But I think you raised very, very good points about exactly why we need this kind of attention to periodic updates on what the heck's going on. Hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Mrs. Clark, are you?
Yes, I yield.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
No comments.
Mr. Wiley?
No comment.
Mr. Hunt, do you have anything additional?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Gallin?
No comments.
Okay, so our next meeting is scheduled for September 26?
Yes, ma'am.
And October 10? Being that we have no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second.